Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, February the 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM. First, I'd like to do a call of order in roll call. Andrew Hensley.
Yeah.
Nate Kaiser.
Yeah.
Tara Dye.
Here.
Steve Brady.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Luann Wallace.
Here.
And David E. Sir, you have a quarter. All right. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And first, we'll have the invocation with Caleb and then the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody would stand. And also, I would like to offer condolences to Jim Little, Shiloh. Shiloh is an boy of our county, and Jim's been a very important piece of our county. And we're praying for you. And we just want to offer those condolences.
Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. And Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, Father. Father, we ask that you touch the little family, give them comfort and give them peace during this trying time, Father. And Lord, we ask that you help us, help us give you all the glory. Help us be more like you. Lead, God, and direct us in everything that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You need to reflect on this, my sister.
Yeah. And also, Mr. Kaiser here, our supervisor-at-large, lost his dad. So keep that family in your prayers, too. Didn't want to forget. Thank you, Rebecca. Just have a couple of items here that I want to change. One, on air, if you've got a copy of the agenda, the only thing I'm going to do is move Michelle Vance first on the presentation and New Leaf Energy and Solar Project second. So I want to do that. And then also, I want to add something to the reports. Line one, Lonzo is going to head that up. We have our electoral board presentation. So if you all would add that, those lines or whatever, we would greatly appreciate it.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda with the exceptions and changes noted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. New business, we have the approval of the minutes, or consider approval of the minutes of the following meeting of the Russell County Board of Supervisors. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Michelle, presentation has been wait to the last. Go ahead, Michelle. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. We're here to talk about a youth group called Young Marines. The Young Marines is a national nonprofit 501(c)(3) youth education and service program for boys and girls, ages eight through high school graduation. The Young Marines promotes the mental, moral, and physical development of its members. We focus on teaching the values of leadership, teamwork, and self-discipline so that its members can live and promote a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. The Young Marines strengthens the lives of America's youth, which is their tagline, by teaching the importance of self-confidence, academic achievement, honoring our veterans, good citizenship, community service, and living a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. The program focuses on character building and leadership and promotes a lifestyle that is conducive to being productive members of society. A little bit about the history. In 1959, in Waterbury, Connecticut, several former Marines formed an organization for boys that would mirror the values of the Marine Corps, their vision to offer leadership training and other life skills, forming the bedrock of the organization known today as the Young Marines. Years later, the program is a highly respected youth organization for boys and girls that has grown to over 236 units across the country. Now, the closest unit to Russell County is 120 miles away in Knoxville. So I don't think anyone would be involved in that anywhere around here. The focus has remained the same, to strengthen the lives of America's youth by teaching the importance of self-confidence, academic achievement, and honoring our veterans. The core values, leadership, teamwork, and discipline are well-understood and practiced by all. The Young Marines is the proud recipient of the Department of Defense Fulcrum Shield Award for Excellence in Youth Anti-Drug Programs over 13 times and several awards from the Drug Enforcement Administration. Now, I just told you the value and the missions and a little bit about the history. And I got a short video to show you real quick. And then my daughter, Sidney Burgos, who was a young Marine, is going to talk a little bit about her actual experience.
Good evening. Today, I want to share with you how being a part of the Young Marines program has profoundly impacted my life. For me, Young Marines is more than just an organization. For me, Young Marines is more than just an organization, it's a way of life. It's a program that shaped me into who I am today, teaching me lessons I'll carry with me forever. Through the Young Marines, I had the privilege of participating in some truly incredible experiences that pushed me beyond my limits. I took part in numerous weekend encampments where I learned the value of discipline and hard work. I attended various leadership schools that sharpened my decision-making and communication skills, preparing me for challenges of life. One of the most memorable aspects of the program was doing color guard for parades and special events. There's something incredibly special about representing your country and honoring those who served. I also participated in Toys for Tots drives where I saw firsthand the difference that one person or one community can make in the lives of others. But perhaps the most eye-opening experience was the two-week trip along the East Coast where I traveled with fellow Young Marines and teens from other countries. We learned about the rich history of our nation, visited historic sites, and deepened our understanding of the sacrifices made by those who came before us. Another unforgettable experience was marching in the Pearl Harbor Day Parade in Hawaii. To stand on the historic ground and honor the brave men and women who fought there was beyond humbling. I also had the honor of meeting some of the decorated soldiers of Easy Company, veterans of World War II. Their stories of courage, resilience, and sacrifice left a notable mark on me, reminding me of the strength of human spirit. Through all of these experiences, Young Marines taught me valuable life lessons, lessons that go far beyond drills and uniforms. It taught me the importance of leadership, the power of teamwork, the necessity of self-discipline, and how to be a productive, positive member of society. Looking back, I can honestly say that the Young Marines program changed my life for the better. It gave me the tools to succeed, but more importantly, it instilled in me a sense of pride and responsibility, and for that, I will forever be grateful. The youth of our community will benefit greatly from the Young Marines program because it provides them with an environment where they can develop crucial life skills that are often overlooked in today's fast-paced world. Through Young Marines, young people are taught the importance of leadership, teamwork, self-discipline, and respect, skills that are essential for success in school, work, and life. The program helps instill a sense of responsibility and purpose, encouraging youth to become active, positive members of their community. In short, the Young Marines program is a powerful tool for shaping the next generation of leaders, helping them grow into responsible, compassionate, and hard-working individuals. The youth of our community will not only gain valuable skills through the program, but they will also develop the character and resilience necessary to face the challenges of the future with confidence and integrity. I am a Young Marine.
Now, with this program, I was also an adult volunteer throughout the entire time Sidney was in the program. We are starting a unit here in Russell County, both Sidney and I, along with the help of her husband and my daughter-in-law. Sidney is also an Army veteran, as well as her husband, so they have served their country. One thing I want to tell you is, is this organization doesn't just change the kids, it changes the adults. I was on every encampment with her. You know, we were right there with them. The thing that this organization does is, we as adults are here to guide them, not to tell them what to do. They ran the program. We didn't run the program. They knew it had to be done. There are guidelines in which they have to do it, just like if you're in the Marines or anything like that. This program is not a segue for the Marine Corps to go into service or anything like that. One of the girls that Sidney was very close to in the program, and they went all throughout the program together, she did not go into the service, but she is a lawyer now. She went to college and did her thing. She's married, she's a lawyer, practicing lawyer up in Pittsburgh. So this program will give the kids a chance to get out of their comfort zone and give them the ability to have someone boost them up. And it's not us that's boosting them up, it's people their own age that's boosting them up. So that's why, that's one of the reasons we want to start a program here in the county. The program also offers to the adult leaders several seminars throughout the year to give us guidance on, you know, how to deal with different situations and how to teach the children and all that sort of thing. They also have an adult leadership conference once a year. At that adult leadership conference once a year, among the awards they give out every year, there is one Young Marine of the Year from all 200 and some units. And I can't tell you how wonderful that is to see our kids, you know, go through that and stand up there and get that award. With this program, it takes support of an entire community. So I am here to let everyone in the county know that we're doing this and to ask for support, but I'm also asking for people for donations and funds. I know people come up here and ask you guys for funds all the time. I know there's some drug prevention funds that I'm hoping that you can help us with and get, because there are things that we're going to need. And there's a lot of kids that won't be able to pay the entry fee, the application fee, which includes your uniforms, your books, you know, we need tents, we need gear, the whole nine yards. So I am asking for help with that. That's about all I can tell you. If you have any questions for us, or...
One thing I'd like to say is thank you for your service. And if there's a couple of board members, I think this is a great initiative. I think a couple of board members, if you want to volunteer, we can only allow two, but if we have a couple that would want to volunteer to help you guys on the ground, you know, that way we'll be able to obtain more information as far as board, we're not allowed to be three at a time. So if there's anybody on the board that would want to volunteer to look into this initiative.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you, Tara. Anybody else? We need two.
I'll do it as well.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. So to be able to move this initiative faster, further along, you've got two good board members that will be able to talk to you, work with you, and help educate. You all can help educate the rest of us on what needs to happen. And we can, we can look through their perspective, we can look for how legally we can appropriate certain types of monies and stuff like that to see if we can help.
Yeah, I've already spoke with Bill Watson this evening. I'm going to set up a meeting with him.
That'd be good.
Get the Sheriff's Department involved in it as well.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, y'all know, I grew up in Baltimore City. Y'all know what Baltimore City's like. Sidney grew up in the county, which is not much better. This program is a lifesaver for kids. It really is. Because if they can't come and talk to adults, they have their peers they come and talk to. They have, you know, and they get to meet so many different people. I know, you know, we used to have the unit she was involved in, we had a winter encampment. It was called Frozen Chosen. And they slept out in the snow in the tents. Of course, I didn't, but it's a great experience for the kids, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you all, and we'll get follow-up information, and we'll work with you guys. I think it's a great opportunity. I think we need to recognize our veterans every day. We wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for them. The men and women have served our great country. So we're grateful, we're grateful.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. Next on the presentation, I'll stay on task here, is the New Leaf Energy Solar Project, Quentin Wood, Jesse Robinson.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me. My name's Quentin Wood. Jesse was unable to attend tonight due to a conflicting meeting. And tonight, I'd like to discuss two projects that we are looking to propose within the county. They are along the River Mountain Road, just kind of northwest of here. We're calling them 4072 River Mountain Road and Zero River Mountain Road.
Excuse me just a minute. Could you give the Board those addresses again?
Yeah, so the one site is 4072 River Mountain Road. And then the other site is, there isn't actually a 911 address associated with it, but it's off of River Mountain Road adjacent to 4072, which...
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. So a little bit about ourselves. New Leaf actually started out as Borrego. Back in 1980, we had three brothers. They started with kind of rooftop solar and graduated up through to doing community-scale and utility-scale solar right now, along with some batteries and some wind projects. Our company is based out of Lowell, Massachusetts, and we have projects from Maine down into Virginia, out towards the Midwest, and all the way out into California as well. So this slide here kind of talks about the various types of solar projects within Virginia, anything from residential rooftop to behind the meter for commercial industrial. But I want to focus on tonight for these two projects is community solar. Community solar projects are 5 megawatts and below. And in particular, for these two projects, we're looking to get into the Virginia Shared Solar Program with the AppCo Shared Solar, which is a new program implemented by the state. And what it does is that actually helps promote to generate electricity locally. It does bring a savings of anywhere from 10% to 15% to AppCo customers, and it's something that's free to subscribe if you are an AppCo bill user. So some of the types of solar projects, again, we're doing community-scale or small-scale solar, which is at the top, and then the other type that you often see is utility-scale. And the biggest drivers between the two is really what we tie into. So our community-scale projects tie into the small distribution lines that you see running along the roads. Typically, they're a three-phase line, whereas a utility-scale is anything really greater than 5 megawatts. As far as size-wise, they're well over 40 acres. And those tie into the actual transmission lines, 115 kV and above, that you see really running all the way across the mountains. This slide here on the left is a fixed-tilt system. This is an example of one of the sites that was constructed up in the Northeast. The upper right is an equipment pad that we have situated on-site. And at the bottom is the inverters. So to try to tie the equipment together, the bottom right with those string inverters takes the DC electricity generated from the panel and converts it over to AC. It's then routed underground to the equipment pad where we have communication equipment and several different breakers, and a transformer which then steps it up from the AC to match the line that would then be putting the electricity on in the distribution system. So I'll kind of get away from the general and kind of focus in on the project. So the project location, like I said, it is along River Mountain Road. So the bigger picture on the left, you can see Lebanon down towards the bottom corner of the page, and then you see multiple parcels that are highlighted in blue. Those parcels are owned by New Garden Farms and Hillman Properties. And again, it's, for those of you that might be familiar with it, the project's kind of situated behind the Oak Grove Baptist Church. And below, the owner's name is in various parcels that we'll be running across. So sometimes we often get is, you know, how do we pick this spot? Why these particular parcels? And there's a lot that actually goes into citing these projects. We primarily look at, you know, who's around, and we try to make sure that these projects are cited appropriately. For this one here, both projects are cited well over 1,000 feet away from the road. We do conduct threatened endangered species reviews through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, DWR, and other state agencies. With these two projects, we don't have any impacts to any threatened or endangered species. As far as the wetland or stream impacts, we did have a delineation done. We don't have the impacts to the solar facility itself. We are using an existing farm road with a culvert with a stream going through it, and we're currently evaluating whether we need to upgrade that or not, which may constitute a nationwide permit. That's why I left it as minimal impacts to wetlands on this particular slide, is just in case we haven't obtained that type of a permit. We also like to utilize the topography and existing vegetation as well for the screening. And again, going back to being community-scale solar, we need to have a three-phase distribution line to tie into that's relatively close, is also close to the substation as well. And the project has to be located in AppCo. And probably the biggest factor with citing these is really, you know, the landowner wants to actually develop his property for this type of use. And with our projects, you know, the landowner still does retain ownership of the parcel. We do a long-term lease. And for this particular two projects, the landowner is still looking to continue his cattle operations on the parcels as well. So I'll dive into each project a little bit more separately. What you're looking at here is a 4072 River Mountain Road. So on the far left, I have it highlighted. It's orange on the computer screen, doesn't look quite orange on here, but that shows the fenced area. So again, this is a 5-megawatt facility, so we're looking at about 26 acres of it fenced. And there is spacing between the panels, so the actual total acreage of panels within that 26 acres is about 8 acres. And then we're estimating about 13 acres associated with the long-access road. And again, that's coming off of the very top of that screenshot from River Mountain Road, just to the east of the Oak Grove Baptist Church, and following that farm road down through. And for reference, the closest residence to that particular project is about 1,000 feet away, generally located north of that site. To help illustrate, you know, how we're doing the screening, this is a quick profile running down through the center of the project. So on the far left of the profile, we have River Mountain Road. You can see that it's sitting down towards the bottom, and you have a couple hills and a very fairly steep hill. You can see where we have our fence line called out. We kind of indicated the solar panel area towards the bottom, so you can see where you have the solar panel area towards the top where it starts falling down and away. So we're trying to utilize that topography in order to prevent any type of direct view shed from River Mountain Road and from some of those residents to actually seeing the solar facility itself. So the second project is Zero River Mountain Road. Very similar, it's going to be a 5-megawatt facility, fixed-tilt racking. This one has 24 acres, and again, we still have about 8 acres under panel. The access road is, we're utilizing the same farm road for access to this facility. Again, just by the Oak Grove Baptist Church, we're looking at about 6 acres for access and stormwater. And I believe the closest residence to this particular project is about 810 feet. And similarly to the 4072, we're using the topography primarily to shield the project from the residents which are mainly north and west of the site. So you can see River Mountain Road on the far left, and we have it kind of called out for where the solar panel areas are in relation to the topography and the slope. So as part of the project, we did do some community outreach. We sent out mailers to about 33 different residents in and around, not only who were abutting, but also just kind of around the surrounding property. The mailers were sent out on January 7th. We held a community meeting on January 22nd down at the community center in Lebanon. We had nine attendees. As far as questions and things go, they were very inquisitive regarding the solar project itself, and didn't really have any type of true negative feedback regarding the design or the layout. So this slide here focuses on some of the community solar benefits, and I know I touched on this earlier. The community solar or shared solar program with AppCo, the community members can subscribe, and it is a free subscription, and they can save anywhere from 10% to 15% on their AppCo bill. It does provide, both of these projects combined will provide additional tax revenue to the county. Jesse Robinson, who couldn't be here tonight, had estimated it would be about $1 million worth of additional tax revenue to the county over the life of the project. And one of the nice things about these is that it is a quiet neighbor, so the solar panels don't generate any type of noise. And our equipment pad with the transformers and the inverters do cause a slight hum, but we've mitigated for that by utilizing the appropriate distance to ensure that we don't have any noise on any adjacent properties. The solar facility doesn't increase any traffic, it doesn't cause any type of burden on the local infrastructure either. These sites are monitored remotely, so you might have a bi-weekly to monthly visit out on-site. The project will create temporary construction jobs along with a couple long-term jobs associated with it throughout its life. And the project will just generally improve the reliability of the interconnection grid. So when we tie into that three-phase along River Mountain Road, AppCo will let us know what we need to do in order to upgrade those lines along that circuit. That's something that we would bear, which in general improves that reliability along that line, and those individuals that are pulling power off of that. I want to thank you guys for your time, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
The Board, have any questions?
Did you mention, you may have mentioned, I may have missed, the life expectancy of the program, of the system?
Yeah, I believe it's 40 years. I'd have to go back through and look at the lease. It's usually either 35 or 40.
And how do you, what do you usually figure the estimated tax revenue?
That's something I would have to get with Jesse. Robinson and Halford send you an email as to how she estimates that. Typically, she'll get ahold of the assessor and try to figure it out, but in some counties where they might not have went through the process, we may have looked to other counties that have something similar and try to match it to give you an estimated cost.
Can you provide us a copy of this information and then direct it to the county administrator, and then he can hand it, he can get it out to the board members via email or whatever?
The slide deck.
Slide.
Yeah. Lonzo has the slide deck.
Yes, sir. If you will, send that out, just so that if I have any questions going down.
What's your target for construction start?
I want to say it's 2026 to 2027.
2026, early '77.
2026, 2027, yeah. I can add that to, we can send an email to the Board and let them know. And just, Nathan, just to clarify, on the 40 term, typically it's a 20-year lease, and then usually it's extended at five-year increments up to 35 or 40 years, just to be transparent on that with you.
What's the lifespan on these, what's the lifespan on solar panels? It's themselves, the 40 years on the actual panel?
So there's a manufacturer warranty of 20 or 25 years that come with them. There's documentation on the degradation of those solar panels, and at the end of the 40 years, they're still operating at like 85% capacity. So if you have a panel that's rated for 650 watts, at the end of the 40 years, 40 years, it's going to be about 80, 85% of what that labeled capacity was. it's going to be about 80, 85% of what that labeled capacity or generating capacity was.
What, what company are you using for, to source these panels?
So right now, as far as sourcing goes, it really depends upon the market availability. There are some companies that are starting to pop up within the states to create these solar panels, but the bulk of them are being imported.
And are they going to have protection on them from hail damage?
Yeah, so with that, there is typically insurance that we have to get with that. And again, there's a manufacturer's warranty with that as well. And oftentimes when they do construct these sites, they order excess panels should there be any type of issues, so they can swap that out.
You said in the, the meeting that we had, that you, you guys would have one or two people on site that would be employed. Can you tell us more about that?
Yeah, so with the operation and maintenance, obviously you have your vegetation management, which would require, you know, more of a long-term job. And then you would also have more likely a technician out on site too that may be assigned to that facility. Should someone need to be out on site to take care of an emergency or something to that effect.
How, do you remove the topsoil in order to sink these in the ground? Because they are on poles and they rotate. So do you remove all the topsoil?
So we do not like to strip the topsoil. We're looking to limit the stripping of topsoil to what we need for the access road improvement, stormwater BMPs associated. Well, associated with the stormwater BMPs. We typically use tracked drivers. As far as the foundation goes, it's kind of like a W beam that you see along the road for the guide rail systems that they mainly drive into the ground. So no, we're not looking to strip the entire site, put the poles and try to put the topsoil back. We'll just work right over top of that. And all of that gets worked through as part of our ENS and stormwater as well to ensure that we do, you know, even though there may be some minor compaction, try to revitalize that soil and reestablish the vegetation.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Concerning the co-op that we talked, that you talked about, I'm calling it a co-op. I don't know what you're calling it, the community can buy into it. So I call it a co-op, is that kind of what you call it?
So you're not actually buying in? It's, the way that it's set up is that, yeah, so like they'll be like, hey, you can sign up, it's a free sign up. It's still being determined if there's going to be a minimum bill. The minimum bill will be, you know, say if your electric bill's 50 bucks and you're less than 50 bucks, the program want to build, want to benefit you. You won't really see a cost savings. So I wouldn't say you have to buy in, but it's something that you can participate in.
Okay, so with 33 residents in, along River Mountain Road, have I got that name right? Is that the right name of the street? But anyway, the 33 proposed residential areas, does it come out of that area so the 33 can sign up? Be part of the members? Can it go further than that?
So the way that I understand is that it's anybody with an AppCo bill can be a member. It's not geospatially constrained.
Yeah, and so the proposal would be that the member pays X amount of dollars. And they get a separate bill, right, to not make this hard to understand?
I believe it's still billed through AppCo.
So they get it, so they get that discount or whatever off of their American Electric Power bill?
I believe so.
I'm trying to work on that one too, I couldn't.
I believe so. So I'm, and I do apologize, Jesse is typically the one that handles this.
I'm sorry, I won't grill you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just a civil engineer, so you can throw topsoil and stormwater questions at me, that's fine.
We're trying to save a buck.
I can, I can write down your questions, I can have Jesse email the board about how the AppCo program works and who subscribes and how those discounts are applied in the billing.
So in other words, I don't, my constituents do not live within a 10 or 15 mile radius. Maybe, maybe they do, of this site. And so in order, I'm just asking for them. So in order for them to be able to subscribe and be a member, they still can. Because it's, as long as they're paying an American Electric Power bill, they would be able to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, that's great information.
I'll step one. What about the waste as far as containment of the waste or the expulsion of the, of the units or the panels and?
At the, at the end of life?
At the expense of you guys or what do you do?
Yeah, so, so I can, I can get into that. For the decommissioning portion of the project is once a project reaches the end of its life cycle, it's within our lease for our, for us to have that decommission within a set amount of time. And that sole responsibility and cost is bore upon us.
Okay.
As far as, you know, 40 years out, I do know what there is. I believe Bedford County is currently looking at putting in a solar facility for manufacturing. Their second phase is actually a recycling facility for these.
Yeah.
So if you look at the panels, the bulk of that material is actually recyclable, aside from the film. But they're working on, you know, further recycling that. Again, with those panels still being operating at 80 to 85%, I foresee there being a secondhand market for used panels to be sold as well. I mean, you know, you have your, your beater cars and they're getting shipped down to South Africa and being sold down there and reused. So I do foresee there being a market, but you know, worst case and as far as it comes with county for bonding as part of our agreement.
Right.
We would anticipate worst case as to, okay, we need to, you know, take this to a residential, to a waste management facility for appropriate disposals. So we do capture those costs appropriately with our bond with the county.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, Steve.
At the end of your, end of the project line, and I assume it's determined that the efficiency of the panel is sealed. Is that right? Panel ceases to function?
I'm not entirely sure on that, as to how they landed on the 35 to 40 years. Because you're still functioning. I just don't know if maybe the technology at that point is to where it's like.
I guess my question is, you, do you abandon the site altogether? Or would you look at putting a newer technology at the side? If it's been a productive site.
It's plausible, it could come back. But at that time, that would, that would require renegotiation with the landowner. Because again, it is just a lease. So at the end of the lease, if the landowner doesn't want to do it, he has some other plans, you know, that's that. But there's always a possibility for it to be like, hey, this worked out, let's swap it out. But again, that would also be coming back to you as well for re-permitting, so.
It seems like if you put all the time in to locate the property and do all the legwork around, if it were anything close to what the original project was like, would it be done so?
Possibly. It's, it's difficult to say with our energy market nowadays.
How many panels would be on that, like five acres, six acres, eight acres? How many panels can you fit on that amount of space?
I'd have to look at our site plan, but there's probably close to 12,000 individual panels over that eight acres. And I'm just roughshodding it from other projects. And the solar panel itself is similar to like an OSB supply, so it's like a four by eight.
You mentioned having to have three-phase power. So if you don't, is that something you run or AEP runs it to you or?
Yeah, so there are, there are some projects that we've looked at where it is single-phase. So as part of our interconnection study with AppCo is that they do evaluate what's at the sub, what equipment's at the sub, and also that circuit itself. And they'll provide us with the cost to upgrade that line to be three-phase. And that's something that we would have to pay as part of our interconnection costs. So that's why we typically try to find sites that already have existing three-phase to try to limit the amount of cost for those upgrades.
What infrastructure does AEP have now to connect with the solar panels?
There is three-phase out there. So we would actually run our own line down to that existing distribution line and tie into the three-phase. They're looking at the site itself, the interconnection and letting us know, you know, hey, we got to upgrade the wires or insulators or whatever they need on their side. And that would be provided to us as part of our interconnection costs that we would be paying as part of the project.
So, New Leaf, is that the name of your office company?
Yes, sir.
So New Leaf, are you in the business of acquiring land and developing the project, getting it operational and then selling it? Or is your, is your company one that holds the property, the lease and continues to operate the facility until?
So our company is, I guess I'll step back. When we were Burega, we were a development EPC, so we would construct and own and operate. As we grew, we end up, our development arm ended up splitting off from the EPC and O&M. So we solely go out, find the projects, do the permits. And then we work with a small group of buyers who do the construction and do the operation and maintenance. So we vet them out. I like to think of it similar to, you know, you take your car to a mechanic, you know who you want to use for the mechanic, you know who you trust, or similar with your house. Usually have your plumber or your roofer figured out. So it's the same, same mentality with us when we're working with different buyers. So we have a select group of buyers that we work with to be like, hey, we have this project. Are you interested in taking the rest away from construction and operation and maintenance?
Anybody else? Everybody satisfied?
So your large-scale projects, your 40-acre stuff, that's near high-voltage lines?
Yeah, yeah, those are.
And then your small stuff, your five-acre type stuff is near three-phase power?
Yeah, so the utility scale, and the other thing with the utility skills, that typically requires its own small substation within the utility scale project as well to put it up onto those transmission lines. Whereas we have a smaller transformer to match like the 12 and a half or 33 KV lines that run along the road. And we'll put it onto those three-phase distribution lines. So it's a lot smaller in nature, it also keeps it more local as well. Because when you tie into the tran, to the utility, you know, the transmission lines is just kind of running all over the place where we're injecting on the other side of the substation.
Okay, so I got one more question. So you said that you work with other companies that come in and do that. So basically the decommissioning will not be with you all, it will be with whatever company?
That's correct, but it is, so it's all tied within our lease documents for the decommissioning, how it's going to happen. And then same thing with the county as well through the siding agreement and all that carries through. So, you know, they would still be responsible for the bond, because the decommissioning bond with the county would be obtained prior to getting building permits.
Do you all already have a company for this or are you still making?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, switch down to new business. The approval of the minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the following meeting of the Russell County Board of Supervisors. Unapproved minutes of January 6th, 2025.
Make motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Flip machine here. Okay, second one is the approval of the expenditures, consider approval of expenditures presented for payment.
I'll make that motion, we pay our bills.
Thank you, Mr. Di, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Okay, now we have committee of appointments and board consideration, Swords Creek Community Center.
Well, this is yours, David.
Yeah.
So on David's behalf, since he can't make motions, I'd like to, at his direction, want to reappoint all these people back to another two-year term, plus an addition Denise, D-E-N-I-S-E Smith, S-M-I-T-H.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I appreciate that, they've done a wonderful job. I can, if anybody wants to know, I'll give you the names if you're curious. But Cindy Di, Jerry Has, Lynn Has, Alicia Plaster, Teresa Way, and now Denise Smith. Okay, constitutional officer reports and requests. We've got Randy.
Yeah, we'll figure out.
Thank you, Randy, we appreciate you and Terry coming tonight and Bill and his staff and sheriff's officers. We appreciate you guys, thank you. Okay. Moving on, we've got our attorney wheels on address the solar project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We've received a updated revised siding agreement from CEP Solar relative to their 12-megawatt proposal. And I would like to detail that to the board in executive session. And so to allow us to negotiate that further, I would request that the board go into executive session, follow and to close the business at the end of the agenda. And that would be pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.2, 3711, items five and eight, to allow consultation with legal counsel. Other than that, glad to see that we have another applicant here, New Leaf, who I believe is represented by the same law firm in Roto Gentry Lock that is also representing CEP. So happy to take that up then too.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Yep.
Now on the reports, I guess I'll turn this over to county administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. First on the county administrator's reports is, as we have asked to be added, the Russell County Electoral Board and Register Office.
Welcome, Diane.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I'm Diana Shorter, I'm the General Registrar and Director of Elections. The members of the electoral board were not able to be here today. But what I have today is a very brief announcement. As we know, Copper Creek and Swords Creek are closed and they also served as polling places. And so we will need to establish new locations for these voters. The electoral board and I will be available to you all as you go through this process to provide any information and answer any questions. One, those, once those changes go into effect, the affected voters will be notified by receiving an updated voter card. And again, we're here for any questions.
Anybody have any questions on the board? We appreciate you so much.
Thank you for your.
Thank you. Next on the county administrator reports is, of course, the board supervisors just returned from the 2025 Southwest Virginia Legislative Reception. Of course, from January 27th through the 31st, or the 30th, it felt like through the 31st, it was quite a bit of meetings. But through this, as you can see, that was attached to the agenda, the board supervisors stayed very busy. And, you know, meeting with major state agencies, legislators, funding agencies to be able to address that, projects that we will be looking at in the county, and businesses that we're trying to recruit to come into the county. And that, that will be addressed at a later date. Now, one of ones that's already on, and I'll, I'll let the chairman of the board speak up, is everyone was wanting to know how much advocacy we were doing with American Electric Power. So I'll turn it over to the chair.
Well, it was very productive as far as, you know, what I looked at. We had a very active board that worked closely together, made a lot of visits. We were basically supporting the legislation pieces that were going to affect from most of the, of our local legislators that seen the need, seen what, you know, we're going through as far as high cost. So we were supporting them and those pieces of legislation on both sides of the aisle. I asked Mr. Di, Terry Di, to go with me and make a visit to one particular delegate. And actually, the conversation went really well. So a lot of times up in those areas in the dim-witty and Northern Virginia, they don't go through what we go through. And, you know, so we had to emphasize to them. So I was very pleased, I appreciate our board, everybody that was in attendance.
Uh, I will tell the public, this is a working board. I mean, there was meeting after meeting, and we stopped to get a sub, and then we went to meeting after meeting, and my feet were killing me, but I, I mean, we were, we were very active and very knowledgeable of a lot of things that we want to see happen in Russell County. So I'm just so grateful for the leaders that we have that are willing to take that kind of time for for all of Russell County, in their districts, we worked in our districts, but we also work for the whole county as a whole to see great things come, and and I'm just really grateful.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to elaborate on what the chairman had said, these were very important, some of them very, very high level meetings, and I can elaborate on it, but look for them in the future. And this is where I'm going with the next one. Of course, next on the county administrator reports is the annual twenty-four report of, uh, what the board of supervisors had accomplished. I I recommend, you know, each citizen take a look at it, we post it on Facebook or on our webpages. And, uh, anybody that wants a copy of it, take, please take a look of it. Um, of course, it goes through the demographics and what projects we have done, what raises we have done, what we have accomplished through economic development, education, uh, community services, projects, public safety. It's it's our first one that we published, so this is a good learning experience. But one of the things that, you know, we're proud of is what the board supervisors was able to accomplish, you know, even even into the grant, even during this busy year, we're looking over six million dollars just in, you know, local appropriations in additional to what we had already done through federal and state grants, uh, water projects, et cetera, et cetera. Now, uh, we went through it, and then one, I'm going to ask the community if you have any suggestions on something that we may have missed, what was something that we did not highlight. Um, of course, uh, Charlotte Little, she has taken this upon herself, so we we tried to look at every classification and every nuance and every project that we were trying to do and include. And if anybody has any ideals, please reach out to her or I, and we'll be doing the new one. Because, uh, we are just based off of what the projects that they got back from the current legislative and the meetings, we're we're going to fill this up fast, watch this. So, uh, that's not, uh, that's a promise. Good God, we we went through a lot of meetings. Next is another project, uh, this is the Mel Lehman Free Medical Clinic and Dental Free Clinic. I advise the Russell County citizens, take advantage of this. Look at, this is for uninsured patients, this is free clinic, medical and dental. So, uh, they were here on January twenty-second of twenty twenty-five. They are working with us to, uh, not on, they were here at the government center, but the agreement that we got with them and the partnership that we have with them, we're moving them through each location within the county. They will be coming into the Honaker area, the Cleveland area, the Castlewood area, the Dane area, back into, they're doing a rotation every month into a location. So guys, if you have a family member, if you have a cousin, somebody that needs this, look, it's a great program. It's it's, they work with our DSS, I see Sandy sitting out there, they work with our DSS and Terrazone, too. They have partnered with us, so use this, uh, and like I said, the key word, it's free. And they do give good care and they're highly recommended.
So long as they'll be here monthly?
Yes, ma'am. Next is, uh, on the county administrator reports is the road reporting. It's just for the boards review, take a look at those on, uh, on the county routes that had reported by the county. The next is the B dot monthly road system report, the residency does not have any requests before the board at this time. It went into the snow removal, the storms, of course, everybody was under the storms for, it felt like, uh, two months. But it has the maintenance plans, and it also have our overlays and sealants that we've got scheduled and what routes they are. Take a look at it. Next, on the county administrator request is, first is, I'm at, at the request of the chairman or device, at the advice of the chairman, I have the Russell County Invitation for Bid I F B for the Russell County Community Center Fire and Department Generators Installation Contract. I need, uh, two members appointed, you know, to serve on that for opening.
Uh, I'll appoint myself and Steve on that, and we'll move that forward.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is, um, the, I guess what's a lot of, this is the next hottest topic in the county, the Russell County Reassessment Equalization Board Appointments. So, of course, right now, currently, the assessor persons that we have hired, they're, they are working out of our, actually, the board supervisors' room, uh, on a daily basis, and they're taking, um, scheduling appointments, and they're meeting with all the citizens. Uh, what was published out in the paper, we had to extend it, there was a delay due to the hurricane. What had happened is they had mailed them out from Richmond. As anyone that gets mailed in the county, it goes to Knoxville, then it is trucked back out through mailing facilities and separated. These were bulk mailed out, but what, one of the things that caught everybody off guard from the east southwestern part of Virginia was these mail facilities that take care of these intermediates were wiped out in Tennessee due to the hurricane. So they had to reroute, they have rented spaces, so that some of people have got tickets. Let me assure you that if you want a ticket, we will get it for you. Everyone will have an opportunity to present their case until the last one. Because the work that we do and what we're setting and looking at, you know, from the board's perspective, each each member will have an opportunity, no matter how many times it is, come down and advocate for their case, either before the assessors or the equalization board will have that opportunity. That's guaranteed.
So.
Can I say something on that?
Yes.
Okay, just for the publics, in notification, I would encourage you to dial the number on that and set up the appointment, uh, because there's a process here before we can take any action. There's, uh, dialing the number, getting the appointment, going through the process, and then going through the equalization board. And what we've heard for some some constituents is that they're well satisfied with what the process is and what's took place. So I would encourage everyone, dial the number, get an appointment, go through the process. All that's got to be done and complete before this board can take any action, because we got to know all that. We got to, it's got to be filtered back into the board. So I just wanted to encourage you all, I've been telling everybody, dial the number, get an appointment, and then, you know, it'll it'll go through that process.
Thank you, Chairman.
Your appraisers will be available until what day?
The appraisers right now, we have got to the fourteenth. If we have more, we will extend it two weeks increments at a time until everyone.
But you have to go through the appraisal.
Yes, you have, that's the first process, yes. And then, if you do not come to a resolution with the assessors, the next formal one step, this is by the Code of Virginia, it goes to the equalization board. So that's the next process that will happen. And then you'll have opportunities to present your case or your claim before the Board of Equalization. And before we move on, I have got, uh, three names that are before you. Uh, that was given to, uh, Ms. Barbara Parker as a Board of Equalization member. I have a Mr. John Watson as a Board of Equalization alternate member, and Walter F. Parker as a B O E alternate member. I need a vote for a motion to approve those. Yes, yes, sir.
I'll make that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Di. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Chairman. Next is, again, we're starting off on a good rate, let's go into Cumberland Plateau Housing Authority, the payment in lieu of taxes for the HUD developments and placement of the piston placement apartments. I need a motion for seventeen thousand seventy-two dollars fifty-four cents for, uh, a payment in lieu of taxes for the, uh, the needed housing project.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second by Mr. Hensley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Next on the county administrator, uh, reports is, of course, is for, this is out of the Department of Housing and Community Development. This is actually one of the things that we've, uh, finalized while we were in Richmond. I need an approval for the natural gas light pipeline planning grant for the Castlewood, Russell, and Pa- Castlewood in the Russell County County line of a hundred thousand dollars. I need approval in appropriations for a hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion on behalf of Castlewood, St. Paul, and Dane, thank you very much.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have, uh, motion by Ms. Wallace, second by Mr. Kaiser, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Chairman. The last request is, uh, from the Cumberland Plateau Regional Waste Management Authority, of course, uh, Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Andrew is sitting on those, on the manpower service agreement and user agreement. I needed approval for, uh, approval for the manpower service and user agreements. I need a motion approval.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh.
Discussion?
Oh, discussion?
I do. We normally do this, this is a normal type, same?
Yes, every year.
Anything changed?
No.
Okay, there wasn't anything red red lined in my book, so I just wanted to make sure I ask it.
System, no regional template, nothing has changed. I knew that, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Uh, anybody else for discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
And the and the reason that Ms. Wallace asked that, we were very, uh, as as Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Hensley does, with these contracts and these user agreements, they watch them very closely of any additional costs. They, you know, I get calls and comments of, you know, how much involved is Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Hensley is? And they're watching, you know, a great oversight on it. So that's why, if you, when you look at these user agreements, we got to make sure we monitor year to year changes, because y'all know what the cost of trash and the volume of trash is going through. So, uh, all that's been said, that is the conclusion of the county administrator reports and requests.
Uh, I don't have the list, citizens come in. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jim Little.
Oh, Dan Parsori, that's right, she's married.
I'm sure.
Dad lost her.
I guess that.
Yes.
She's still, she's a little.
She's still, she she is to me, she's all I've got now. Uh, first off, Happy Groundhog Day the other day, unfortunately, the groundhog saw the shadows, so we've got six more weeks or whatever there. I'd like, I don't see my clock. I can talk as long as I want. But, no, what I want to talk on is not a particular topic as much as it is a particular attitude. And it's an attitude I see in the county, unfortunately, more and more. So in addressing the board of supervisors, county administrator, and my fellow citizens, you know, there's basically four topics in here I'll quickly touch on. The attitude, the negative attitude in this county, I mean, my family's been in this county since eighteen ninety-eight, and sadly, uh, gee, if I didn't have the farm here in the county, I'm not too sure I'd move to the county. And not because of things going on, as much as the negative attitude going on in the county. Uh, and there's enough blame to go around, it's like anything, you know, there's always plenty of blame to go around. But I'd encourage our supervisors and our citizens to view from a proactive point instead of a reactive point. You know, it, I look online, I look at what's going on, and so many times, we're just being reactive to problems instead of presenting solutions to problems. And, uh, you know, if we're going to, at any point, hope to attract people back, my dad always told me to never come and present him a problem if I didn't have a solution, good or bad. And I think we need to, my dad was a rather quiet man, for those that knew him, and, but that was a piece of wisdom I hold, is that we can't just sit and complain and complain and complain. And it, again, it's from citizenry and the supervisors, we've got to look at positive things that we can do to keep our people coming in. So let's quit, I mean, sometimes we have to be reactive to situations, I understand that. I'm not very smart, but, you know, I at least understand that part of it there. Quit smiling me. But, uh, I know we can't please everyone, we're never going to please everyone. You know, I'm from the old school where NC ME would come to my house to try to buy votes, literally. So those of you that remember NC, you know, I mean, but the point is, we're all neighbors, we're all friends. Let's try to start cooperating as such, instead of, you know, reaching out with negativity constantly. If we're going to retain our youth, we have to, you know, and this is what we've got to do. I'm very blessed, my daughter came back here after college, but, you know, there's a lot that aren't. And our population's decreasing, are we going to keep our antibody here? We've got to present a positive front to Russell County. And it's just so depressing to continually see, I I believe in watchdogs, we need watchdogs on different things. I don't have a problem with having watchdogs and, you know, but if we're going to present problems, let's present solutions also. Good or bad, let's present solutions. You know, transparency, um, and I know I don't understand the workings always of the supervisors, I'm not intended to understand. But most of you all ran on a transparency issue. And sometimes we don't see that, and we realize that we can't always see that for business purposes, for legal purposes, whatever. But a little more transparency sometimes would go a long ways, I think, from the, um, both sides. Social media just taking knocks at people for no reason, you know? A knock at someone personally, I grew up where, I guess, the personal attacks, uh, accomplish nothing. You know, let's attack the issues going on, but not personalities and persons. So that's basically what I've got, I just want to see a more positive county. I want to, I mean, I'm turning seventy here, I can't go along much longer on this. And it's aging me fast, even though Nate's more bald than I am right now. And David. But, you know, sincerely, I I plead, I really plead for our supervisors and our citizenry to try to present and try to work together. If we've got an issue, I'm blessed to have Andrew as my representative. I can pick up the phone, if he's not available, he calls me back. I don't always agree, I agree about ninety percent of the time, you know, until he sells me some bum lamb or something. But, you know, I'm very blessed to have Andrew respond, and we need to contact our supervisors, you know? And I looked at the budget, I saw what you guys got paid, I, you couldn't pay me that to do your all's job. You know, yet I read online, people complaining about you all pocketing money. So I apologize for any that have said that, you know, because unless you've got something hidden that I don't know about, you know, that's not happening. Let's just try to get along and have a positive county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Okay. That's the only one I had on the list, unless anybody here wants to say anything, I'll open it up in case we have any public comment or anybody would like to say anything. But I agree with Jim, I mean, you know, we got to love each other, that's what the good book says. And we got to, you know, take care of our county and, uh, support each other. And if you have any ideals or initiatives and stuff like that we need to work on, I agree with the county administrator. You just let one of us know, and let us try to work with you. We we've got, honestly, I mean, between the treasurer, county administrator, the sheriff, and all the people that work with all the the means and bounds, we're surrounded by, I count it, I call it hands, fingers, and toes. If you see what we're having to deal with, uh, and all the just different pieces of this to try to make our county better, there's not a better county in the area as far as cooperation. a better county in the area as far as cooperation and working together, I'll tell you that. Behind the scenes, we are working to try to make our county a better place, and, you know, we've got some good news coming up, and I think it will help a lot of people to understand that, you know, government don't run as fast as I'd like, you know, when I own my business, I'd jump right on stuff and got it done, but, you know, you figure out real quick, government don't move that fast. So, there's a lot of pieces and parts of it that we got to transfer through, but thank our citizens, we appreciate you all, we appreciate your input and things, whether, you know, whatever it may be, or whatever it is, but I'm sure I'm speaking for the majority of this board, so I won't hold all this up. Has anybody got anything, Lou?
No, I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Ms. Di.
So, you want our citizen, I mean, our comments now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, before we go into executive session?
Yes, ma'am. I hear we do that, so people can leave.
All right, sounds good.
If they want to stay, you can.
Just a couple of things, I was looking on the highway report, and it talks about the county is doing their contract, we have land, contract, Lonzo, is that just for the turning lane at Project Salmon, right below the college?
Oh, as far as the Pure Salmon project, that is the BDOT project that, for the construction road going in, the EDA project, industrial access at the Pure Salmon.
So, it's that turning lane that we go in, that we put the $150,000?
That is correct, and the $850,000 that came from BDOT.
So, all right, our part is the turning lane, are we going to pay, or do we pay for the road that goes all the way in to the Project Salmon?
Now, currently, right now, what's being appropriated for the project is $850,000 from BDOT for Industrial Access Authority, and then $150,000, our share, was $150,000 out of the coal severance, for a total of $1 million, that will take care of the turning lane and the road.
Okay.
And let me, let me, I appreciate that, Ms. Di, and let me also tell the citizen, the money that we collect from gas and coal is where that money goes, and Andrew sits on that board, so it's not taxpayer dollars, it's actually from the production, am I not correct?
That is correct.
I just wanted to kind of verify that, the money comes from the production of coal and gas, which we're not blessed, like some other counties, to be able to get a lot of, Randy can speak for that, I'm sure we'd like to have about four, five coal mines in the area to get that money, but we don't, we're not that fortunate. Steve?
I think there's.
Speak, so they can hear you.
I think it, I think it works, as long as I don't butcher that. I really don't have much of anything, I know, ask Lonzo to work on a form, I think it's, I think it's important that we identify all our, all of our business people in the county, and I think we don't need to, we need to identify them and what they do in an effort to try to help them, see if there are ways that we can help them market their products, or ways that they might be able to work together, form a co-op or something like that. And, you know, every day I learn something new in the county that somebody's doing, and I had no idea they're doing that, you know, so, I think I'd like to just send out a registration, we may have to do an ordinance of some sort, saying, we just want to register, no fees associated with, just from an information standpoint, and the IDA can use that as marketing tool as well, you know, we've done all the artists and chair, we have so many fabrication shops, things of that nature, so, I think it's just important for us to do that, that's one thing I'd like to do.
I mean, if you want to put that on the next agenda?
Lonzo's working on it.
Okay, thank you.
He's working on it now. And we are looking at some additional recreational sites, we're going to have a meeting here pretty soon to look at one major site, see if we can acquire that property, and maybe add some destination points for our tourism group. And other than that, I really don't have much, we'll just appreciate everybody, we'll just try to continue, push the ball a little further. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Ms. Di.
Thank you all for coming tonight. So, I wanted to mention this, Paula Howington at the DSS, they have a program, it's PIPP, so it will help you with your electric bill, and we have the applications for that, I know a lot of people are struggling with that, and if you want to ask me, Lonzo, did we have those printed out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they are here in the back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you all know of anybody who's, who could benefit from that, please pick that up, so, all I've got.
Thank you, Tara. Mr. Kaiser?
Just a couple of things, I want to reiterate about the taxes, we have not set the tax rate, as many of you already know, it's why it says to be determined, TBD on your forms, make sure, if you feel like you got an increase that was too much, which probably smokes everybody, make sure you set that appointment to have a meeting with the assessment company, and then work on the equalization board, and, you know, we're going to work hard to make sure that folks are not paying any more than they have to for their taxes. That's one thing I ran on as elected, was to keep taxes low, and even lower them if we can, and I plan on doing that. To piggyback off of what Tara was saying about the money's available to help out with power bills, Lonzo, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also money available to help low-income folks to make energy upgrades to their heating and cooling systems.
That is correct.
Certain ones, thank you, sir, I was trying to find it, contact me, or Tara, or any of the board members, or Lonzo, there are certain thresholds, you know, it is for low-income households, but, you know, you won't know until you ask, but definitely something to consider, there are certain windows for heating, and then certain windows for cooling upgrades, but it could really help some folks out, because that's why a lot of people's power bills are high, and it's something I, I spoke with over six legislators in person in Richmond about the high cost of power, not just the rates that AEP is costing, but also the usage of folks in southwest Virginia, I see it every day, I'm in the heating and air business, I see it every day, most people's power bills are high because they're running electric heat in some shape, form, or manner, and it's causing very high usage in power, so, you get high usage in power, plus a very high energy cost, you see $1,000, $1,200, $1,400, $1,800 power bills, and for most people, that's just not affordable, especially when they're having to buy $7 dozen of eggs, you know, at the store, so, nothing's easy, but if you are, you know, in that lower income bracket, then at least look into this, because I think it's something that could possibly really help, and that's the PIPP. Lastly, I'll finish up, and I don't mean to talk forever, but.
It's okay.
Mr. Little, I think nailed it pretty, pretty spot on, there is a lot of negativity, especially on social media, and I try to stay away from it as much as I can, that's why I don't post a whole lot, because there is so much, and anything you say, especially as an elected official, gets twisted and turned around, and made into some kind of a meme, or negative post, but I can, I can tell you, in Richmond, this past week, this board worked their tails off to make Russell County a better place. There is a lot of really great things in the works right now, and if we can land the things that we've got in the works and stuff that we can't talk about right now because of negotiations and things, but believe me, if these things come through, it changes the face of Russell County for the better, not for the worse, and that's what everybody always worries about, changing the face of Russell County, what's that going to look like, you know, it's not a landfill, okay, we're not, we're not doing anything like that, it's for the better, and it will really help out our citizens, it'll make Russell County a destination place, a place that people want to live, and hopefully bring people back and keep people here, and expand on some of our tourism in the region, so, I think we've got some really exciting things going on, I can't wait till we can announce them, I wanted to shout it right now, but I know, we've got to keep it under our hat, but trust me, these folks up here, as much as you may have disagreements with one, two, or all of us, believe me, we're all working toward that goal, making Russell County the best place in Virginia to work, live, raise a family, trust me, we're doing it, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, it's a pretty good crowd here tonight, and if we can, I want everybody to know, it's been said a lot to me, directly and indirectly, both, that we're just trying to raise your taxes, I want you to know that everybody here is trying to take care of you on your taxes, to keep your taxes low. There is genuine concern about folks and their power bills, and there, we're limited as to how we can help you with that today, but hopefully in the future, I don't know if any of these solar projects that's been mentioned will even happen, but if they do, maybe we can use that as a way to offset people's power bills. There's things that's been discussed amongst us, and we're not always going to agree with each other, but we're trying, so, I just want the public to know that we are trying to look out for you, even if it doesn't always look like we are, we are, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Andrew. One thing, if it's okay, Tara's on the board at DSS, and Sandy's here, and she's actually an employee there, she talked to me a little bit earlier, we're not going to delay or keep going on, but if you could just speak a little bit, just so people will have that understanding as far as the program, and what it specifies out for the public.
Yeah, talking about the PIP program, that is a year-round energy assistance program that's just been started, they've been working on it, if you'll notice on your electric bills, you've actually been contributing to it for about two years. AEP just came on board with it, I think sometime around June of this past year, but it is a year-round energy assistance program, it's different than fuel assistance and cooling assistance, it's not a money payment that with the county or the state will make to pay your electric bill, what it does, it goes by your gross monthly income, and it can reduce the amount that you are required to pay. If electricity is your primary energy source, then your bill, if you qualify, will be 10% of your gross monthly household income. If you, if you have like wood or coal, but you still have an electric bill, then it's 6% of your gross monthly household income, and you have to pay that 12 months consecutively. When you apply through DSS, you can go online and apply at dssvirginia.gov, you can apply online, we have the applications at our office, if you are approved, there is an income threshold that you do have to meet, but if you do meet that income limit, once you're approved, AEP also has to approve you, so it's not an overnight approval thing, I assume that they probably look back at your payment history and see how that goes, because you do have to make this payment 12 months consecutively to stay in the program, but it is a good way, and if you have zero income, your electric bill, if you qualify, can be $10. So, it, I mean, it is, it's a good program, but I just want people to understand that it's not a money payment.
Yeah.
That the county makes for you, you do have to pay your electric bill, but it can reduce your electric bill. So, I do encourage everyone to apply for that, and it is year-round, where the other energy assistance programs are seasonal, cooling assistance is June through August, fuel assistance is October through December, and then crisis is what we have now, the crisis program that we have now, will pay for repairs on your heating system, it will also possibly replace your heating system if it can't be repaired, and the only way that it'll pay for electric bills is if you already have a disconnection notice set, then you have to come in and do an application or online, we can't do these by phone, but if you do have a disconnection notice set, and you do qualify for crisis, then we can pledge that amount to keep your electricity from getting disconnected.
Thank you so much. Okay, go ahead, Steve's got one more thing.
When Nate was talking, it reminded, he touched a bill there.
Are you done with me?
Are you done, Sandy?
Can you hear me now?
Are you done?
This is not for me. No question for me.
No, 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 just another comment, we had talked about trying to get natural gas distribution system in the area, and there hadn't been much interest by the provider to do that, and one reason we, our electric bills, is, we don't have an alternative, you know, we don't, most people don't have, the only area that I know of here, at least in Lebanon, is there's a little distribution system over in the Purner addition here, but other than that, I tried to get it forever, and they told me, they said, well, people are just afraid that they don't want it, you know, but, lo and behold, when we got back from Richmond, I picked a mail, a load of mail up on Friday, and in that stack of mail was a letter, or form from ANR, yeah, the distribution, people here have their office out in Cumberland Plateau center around there, with a form that said, if we ran gas, would you do this, this, and this, what would you convert? So, I'm going to encourage you, if you get one of those forms, fill that thing out, you talk about a cost savings, if we could go, if we could go to a gas stove, or a gas furnace, or a gas heat, you know, gas logs, whatever, you know, it would be just a big coup, so, if you get one of them, fill that thing out, I don't know what areas they send it out to, I do know right around Lebanon here, but that distribution line comes all up to 71, you know, so, if you get one of them, fill it out, send it in.
Thank you. All right, I'll need the attorney to give us the code.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I guess you would entertain a motion?
Yes.
To go to closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711, Sections 5 and 8, to discuss the solar siding agreement negotiation.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now going into executive session, so what that means is, we're leaving, so. Okay, all right, I need to get a motion to term.
I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, each member of the board supervisors up on roll call certifies that to the best of their knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the board supervisors. Any member of the board supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating substance of a departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Andrew Hensley?
Yes.
Nate Kaiser?
Yes.
Tara Di?
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
Rebecca Di?
Yes.
Will Ann Wallace?
Yes.
David D?
Yes.
Sir, you have a permission to turn to regular session.
Okay.
Set a date.
Well, county attorney, can you speak on that, of course?
Sure, as the board has initiated their budget process, we're going to be working through the budget over the next few months, instead of holding reconvene meetings where we would be limited to the previous month's agenda, I would recommend that you all just hold regularly scheduled meetings with the same notice requirements as every other meeting that you all hold, and so, understanding that there are still some availability discussions that have to happen amongst the county administrator and the board members, I think it would be best if the county board decides to, if let Lonzo pull the members for their availability, and then once that date is selected, we would then publish the notice for the budget meeting to allow the full public to participate in that as an open meeting.
Thank you, Will. Do I have a motion to that regard?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got multiple seconds, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll make a motion, we adjourn? Or, not a motion, but we're going to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
We adjourned. Thank you, everybody.